Okay.
Hi Olivia.
Calling the meeting to order and we're going to have, just hang out with you with me for a second. We're gonna have, wait, we're gonna have roll call of members.
Oh.
That's all right, we can stand. I'll stand in a minute.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Okay. Wait, where's the, oh, sorry, I'm the one that jumped. Okay, you ready? Okay, we're gonna stand up, we're gonna salute the flag, we're gonna turn it right here, okay, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks. Do you want, do you wanna take a picture? Do you wanna take a picture?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna picture this.
I think, I think your wife wants a picture.
Oh.
I'm sure she's, well, here's a picture, here, we'll do this. We'll do this, and then we'll get everyone in it, and you can stand right here by the flag. Can you get us all in? Okay, what's that?
Uh huh.
And one more.
Good job Olivia.
All right, great job.
Thank you Olivia.
Great job, thank you Olivia.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You guys have a great night.
Yeah, you too. I'm sorry, I skipped down. Approval of minutes of the previous meetings, so first, a motion to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2024. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11th?
Some more.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st.
Some more.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
All aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here, we'll dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. I did request it earlier today, I did not get it, so I'll stick it in your boxes hopefully tomorrow. Report from the mayor. Welcome to the Village of Champlain Board Meeting. We have several projects ongoing, would like to take a minute to explain them. The wastewater treatment plant upgrades and disinfection system are nearly complete. Part of this project was mandated by New York State and the rest were much-needed updates. The water line replacement project will begin in the next couple of weeks. This involves water mains on several sections of Main Street, a section on Elm Street, and one on South Street. This work will greatly reduce the number of breaks we have experienced over the last several years, and of course, all of those boil water orders as a result of those breaks. The village has submitted all the documentation needed to become certified as a pro-housing community. We will hear of the certification in about three months. This gives us preference in being awarded grants to address housing needs. We are also finalizing a vacant building registry. The purpose of this local law is to establish minimum standards of accountability for owners of vacant and abandoned buildings. They must register and indicate a plan to rehabilitate or demolish the building, as well as pay a fee. Letters will be going out to those owners of those buildings in the next month. Finally, we are also working with an owner of the old elementary school to apply for a grant to turn that building into several two-bedroom condos. This is part of the Restore New York program. The application will be submitted in May, and we will hear whether we are selected later in the year. One other item of great importance is the amount of speeding on the village streets. Too many drivers are driving too fast. These dangerous speeds put us all at risk. The state police and the sheriff's patrol have been notified and will be issuing tickets. However, it would be beneficial if drivers would just slow down. We have many pedestrians, bicyclists, and children playing to speed near them and possibly cause severe injury or death. Think of the consequences to everyone if such an accident should occur. Thank you all for being part of the community, please stop by or call if you have concerns or ideas that you would like to discuss. Thank you very much. A report from the trustees, Joel?
I've got nothing to report.
Okay, Chuck?
Uh, I have not a lot, just the old community garden has been cleaned up and looks really, really good. So, we won't have all that scraggly growth there and it'll be a nice place to be near the river. The river's been cleaned up a little bit too along the riverbanks. So right now it looks pretty darn good.
It does. Yeah, you can see the river again.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Nikki?
Okay, um, the Arbor Earth Day event for the village is the 27th?
Seven.
Okay, so it said 10 to 11:30?
Uh, something like that. There is an event on Facebook.
Yeah, it was, they're just the one, right?
Yeah.
It's the reason I thought there were two events put up, okay. So, I will, we will do a cleanup of the playground. I think that's a good spot to go with kids especially. And around Main Street and the gazebo area, and then we can do, I haven't planned a craft yet, but.
We do have a lot of seeds, are they still good? They're at the meeting house.
I'm sure, it would be, yeah.
So we maybe could do a planting activity?
Yeah, we can do that, we usually do, so yeah, we could do that. I have to be at the high school for the play.
Well, well.
So by noon, I think.
That's okay, we'll, we'll work it out.
So also that same weekend, the 26th through 28th, the high school drama club, well, I'll say the whole district drama club because there are, there is a fourth grader, fifth graders in there also. So the play is Friday at 7:00, Saturday 2:00 and 7:00, and Sunday at 2:00, I believe. So there are four shows this year. It's going well, I've been there to help with costumes the last, all last week and was just there before he came here. So it's pretty busy, there's a lot of kids, a lot of orphans, but it sounds great. And again, the main role is a fifth grader, so that's pretty awesome. So come out and support the drama club. At the library, we have two senior tech trainings or classes. One is tomorrow night, so the 16th at 3:30 or tomorrow afternoon, and that's using a Google Drive, so if anyone is interested in that. And the 23rd, that's 3:30, it's tech tips for disaster preparedness, so. Those may be our last classes, we're not sure, depending on the grant. So that's what we have for the library so far. We have a meeting this week, so I'll update for anything else at the next meeting. That's what I have for now.
Great, thank you. Kim?
I really don't have anything other than, you know, the water board keeps plugging away. It'll be the end of the year soon, so then it's crunch time. Yep.
Thank you and all of them for, for their diligence in that.
Yeah, this is, this is, once the first of June rolls around and we get the final reports, then it gets, then it gets crazy.
Okay, a report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, everyone has our starts and revenue reports for March. I think we're doing okay. At this point.
Does anyone have any questions before we address the warrant? No? Okay, so we have some additional invoices?
Um, we have some transfers.
Oh, let's do those transfers, yeah, you're right.
Um, A 1320.1 auditor, a hundred dollars from A 1420.1 law, personal services, a hundred dollars, to A 5120, 5182.4 street lighting, two thousand dollars, from A 9060.8 hospital and medical insurance, two thousand dollars, um, to F 8330.4 purification, four thousand dollars, from F 8340.2 transmission and distribution equipment, to F 8320.4 source of supply, two thousand and twenty, two thousand two hundred dollars, from F 8340.2 transmission and distribution equipment, two thousand two hundred dollars, to G 8130.4 sewage treatment and disposal contractual, four thousand dollars, from G 9060.8 hospital and medical insurance, four thousand dollars. I'm hoping these transfers will hold us through till the end of next month, so we won't have to do.
Yeah. May I have a motion to approve these transfers? Some more.
Second.
Any discussion or questions about them? Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye.
The warrant, we have additional invoices of three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-two cents for a pro-warrant of nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
May I have a motion to approve the payment of the warrant with the invoices?
Some more.
Sir, a second?
A second.
Any questions on this? All right, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye.
We do have one invoice for the water line replacement project, project for fiscal advisors in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is there a motion to approve this?
So, second.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, what, what is this for, who is it?
So, I, I.
Fiscal advisors is, is, they have done all the paperwork for us for the water project. They went out and did the grant, and they do all that paperwork for us, we have nothing to.
Is that their name, fiscal advisors?
That's what they're called.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's just the water line one because it's a federal grant and it's, they're very, very complicated.
No, yeah, sure.
So they do all the paperwork.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's just their name is so vague, it's like, it's okay.
That's what they are.
Yeah, you'd think they'd have more to it.
Yeah, exactly. Nope, that's, that's all.
Any other questions on this? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye.
The one that just, the other one after?
After.
I don't know how you wanna do that.
I think we'll just do it right now with the other financial things. I mean, I think we just have to, we're gonna have to do this. So we're going to, I'm going to need a motion to pay back the water in the sewer project accounts at Champlain National for the, for the wire fraud that occurred in March and April of 2023. This is still being investigated, it's definitely not a dumb deal. That's still being examined through law enforcement, but at this point, it's been a year and we're just going to have to pay it back, and then we may recoup that money, but we'll just have to wait and see. Do these need to be separate motions probably, because they're, or not?
No, it's just, it's all one, it's all the same.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
We're in the same.
All right, so may I have a motion for this? Some more. And a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
So, with these, do we have adequate money and?
These are gonna be, they're going to be, insurance are taking that fund out.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how else to.
That's, right, 'cause they know the, the sewers.
To adjust, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye. Okay, report for the superintendent. We've got Mike's report. I don't know if you've had time to read it. They've been catching up on a lot of, a lot of things that needed to be taken care of. I do want, I do want to say to the public, and we'll make sure this gets on our Facebook page and website, that brush, brush-only pickup will be on May 3rd, 17th, and the 31st. Maximum of one pickup load per property, no leaves or bagged debris will be picked up. So I'm gonna say again, no leaves or bagged debris, because I know there are already some out by the curbs. Brushes to be put curbside and stacked so it can easily be loaded by hand into the truck. Three inches diameter and 10 feet length maximum. And if you have any questions about that pickup, just call the office.
And I don't believe leaves will be picked up.
Leaves will not be picked up.
This spring.
Leaves are picked up in the fall, but not in the spring.
Yep.
Does the board have any questions or comments about this report? All right. Mike also gave us a couple of purchase requests. Let's deal with the phone first of all. So, I don't know exactly which year he got his phone, but I think it was either 27 or 2018, I don't know, did you look that up? Eighteen, okay, so that's still six years old. It's not working well at all, several of the features aren't working. That phone is essential to him running this business here.
This is the one where he can get the other information?
Yeah, yes. So he did, he did look up the cost of this phone, he's got two quotes here. Maybe what we could do is get a motion and then we can discuss it. So let's get, okay, and is there a second?
Second.
So, so he's got the, he's got the two quotes. He included a two-year accident protection plan. I think the, the, the Otter, the Otter box to protect it.
I think that's a must.
I do too. Yeah, so the one quote that's actually a little more is last year's model.
And there's less gigs on it.
And there's less gigs on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the one from Amazon is certainly a much better deal.
Yeah.
And it's, not, well, about fifty bucks less.
Yeah. Yep. What do you think? You have any questions about it? Do you want him to look further?
No, if his phone's not working.
It's not working.
It's not working. And it's an integral part of his job. Yeah.
And the problem is he wants to do, get this before, if his other ones was to crap, he moves on.
Yeah, exactly.
His pictures are like super important.
Information he has on.
Mm-hmm.
And other kinds of information, and he has to have a phone here.
I don't have a phone with this.
Okay, so this, it sounds like this motion is going to be for the one off of Amazon for the 156725?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I don't know if I have to pick out that motion for that specific purchase, probably.
I think you do, yeah.
Yeah, so Kim, you made the motion?
I made, I make a motion to purchase from Amazon of the Samsung Galaxy S24, the two-year mobile phone accident protection, and the Otter Box for 156725.
Second.
Okay. No other discussion? All right, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye. And then the other item is a back rack. This is needed to mount a safety strobe light and mount the antenna for the water radio readings. He also has two quotes on that, and the lower quote is 50997. So may I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the from Rick Warehouse to Rack Warehouse for 50997.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Um, Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McCuttrick.
Aye. Uh, correspondence?
Stewart's Holiday Match Grant of $600. Correspondence from insurance company regarding claim for patrolling spill, wastewater, water training seminar from Northern New York Water Works. Correspondence from New York Agriculture and Markets regarding the farmer's market. Correspondence to Sheriff's Office regarding patrolling of Elm Street and Oak Street, first quarter sales tax revenue.
So just a couple of points on this correspondence. The Stewart's Holiday Match Grant was for offering some art classes for children in the summer. The Ag and Markets is certified our farmer's market, so we'll be able to operate. Number five actually should say regarding patrol of Prospect and Oak. Although all of the streets are having speeders, but that was that particular letter, it was the Prospect and Oak. And the sales tax revenue is up. I don't have the amount, but I know it's.
That was my question.
Yeah, I, Juanita and I talked about it today, I don't have another exact number, but it's definitely an increase overall.
Yeah, I think at the end of last quarter, we had like six, six thousand something left, and so we collected forty-one, so we're up at least thirty.
So I have a question on number two.
Yes.
So I was reading that letter from them, and I did not think that we were responsible for that 258,000 or whatever that amount was, but yet, in the letter, it says that we have to pay that to New York State.
Yeah, except we, we were able to cut a deal with New York State.
Okay.
So that letter was almost referring further back into our whole process.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't know if something changed.
No, there's nothing new, no, no, they, they pretty much are saying, well, sorry, we're not responsible.
Right.
And then said, it's your responsibility, but then we dealt with the state.
Directly, yes, okay, that's what I was remembering, but I didn't know if something changed
Directly. Yeah, good point.
Because that letter is very deceiving, giving the background that we know.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 you're right. Now, we've got our five thousand per year over ten years as our repayment.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. All right, new business. I sent you all the vacant building registry application, so I, you know, that was, that's a draft. I was wondering if, I did go over it with Chris, the code enforcement officer, because a lot of this will fall on him, but I didn't know if you had any suggestions that, for changes. This included, this included the fee schedule, and it included a, like, the, the actual form, I think, did I send you that too?
Yes.
I did, okay. So I don't know if you wanna discuss the fees, do you think they're appropriate? Do you think they need to be changed in any way?
Well, I think those are pretty good rates.
Yeah, that's, that's the same rates as what you got from the city.
Mm-hmm. So a multifamily would be considered three, three and up?
Yeah, that's a good point, I probably should write, well, did I do that in the, in the definition? Maybe I did. Oh, I don't know if I did, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jot that down.
No, that should definitely be explained. Right, because it says multifamily, but multi could be one or two, or two.
Well, one and two family is the first one, but still, it should be explained.
Right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point. Any other?
Was this, we're voting on the, the numbers as well, or are we just voting on the registry itself?
We all, we approved the registry, we approved the, the vacant building registry a month or two ago, but we hadn't decided on the fees, so we will have to approve these fees. So yeah, I'm looking for advice on if you think these are good or not. I certainly wouldn't raise them, but you could reduce them.
No, I think keep them there.
You think so?
So.
I think it's a, it's an encouragement.
Right. Making too little people.
Exactly.
Do the one and two family ones increase after the first and second and third year? Or just the, it just has the commercial one increasing for second and third year?
I was gonna say, it's, I mean, so you gotta stand up high, it's, to me, it seems low.
What? Oh. Oh. We talk about that? Oh, I didn't throw that in, if there's an increase.
Well, it wasn't.
Do you have the pots per con there or not?
Yeah, I already have. It's, it's basically the same as what, what you have in there.
Yeah, so it doesn't increase, just the commercial, commercial next use. Yeah.
But it still would be 200 and 400 every year, right?
Yes.
Right.
Again, it's an encouragement to do something, which I would think, if I were the property owner, to do something with that, either restore or, or demolish, to not incur those fees every year.
I think it's low, I, I'm, I completely off base, but it's low. Two hundred bucks a year for a place to just sit vacant, seems like almost nice to nothing. It's almost like you're kind of, in my eyes, it seems like you'd be incentivized to just not deal with it, just pay the fee for two hundred bucks.
But right now, they're not doing anything with them.
I mean, the only thing I would think of is maybe 400 for the one and two families, 600 for the multifamily. But then you've got commercial and next use at 500 for the first year, so do you really want a dwelling to be more than a commercial property?
Well, that's why, that's why I think of what, what is it that we're trying to?
Well, see, tech.
What is it that we're trying to get? Are we trying to get people? Are we trying to get vacant places closed, or are we trying to get them, or, or removed? Are we trying to do it quickly? Like, how are we trying to do it?
Well, the.
Do we not want them at all? Because I feel like if you don't want them at all, then you have like a steep penalty at the top, where it's just like if, if they're sitting around, nobody's doing anything with them, then you're gonna have to pay.
I, I think we want something done to them, not.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to put it back in the use, but.
Just go away because it's more of a tax basis.
But there's an important point here that, these are not really supposed to be punitive. They're really supposed to be a, a pot of money to help address the problem, because it's additional work for the code enforcement officer, and I'm not saying that he's getting this money, but it, it's going to go into the whole, the whole issue of housing and, and these properties. So really, we shouldn't be looking at it as punitive. We are hoping it will move people off dead center and, and do something about these properties, either remove them or rehabilitate them. I hope they rehabilitate them if they can, because we really. I hope they rehabilitate them if they can, because we really, really need housing.
I mean, some of them are, let's face it, some of them are beyond rehabilitation.
Yes. Some of them are going to have to be removed.
But again, these fees are going, I think, going to incentivize people to, to start doing something about it. Because they, they, some of these properties have been sitting vacant forever and they haven't had any consequence for letting them just keep deteriorating.
Yeah, I mean, the failure to register is quite steep.
Yeah.
You know, if you don't register, two hundred and fifty plus an additional fifty dollars per month.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's pretty heavy.
That's gonna start hitting people.
So I think, I, I'm hoping that people do register and then they make a plan. We just want them to get a plan and then make it happen.
So my question on that will be, is, is Chris or the village office going to send out a letter to the landowners of these properties saying, and include a copy of the registration form and a copy of the fee schedule?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And it will come from the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Yeah. And he already, I think, he's already started to put the list together.
Okay. I'm sure there's quite a few.
There are quite a few. So you think they're a little low?
Yeah, I mean, I just, my thought of people are, are owners who are outside the village, who own the property and just have a, it's vacant. I think that's low, but that's just me.
What would you propose?
I would say it would be like a, a steeper fine right off the top, but I would just start at five hundred, five hundred per year.
Okay, so if you're saying it's a steeper one at the, the first year, then what would you propose that be? And then what would you propose for the second and third year?
No, 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 just saying for the first year, just right off the top. But I, in my mind, if you're trying to disincentivize people from doing it, you put it at a fee that people don't wanna pay. You know, I, I think five hundred bucks a year to pay for a place that's not, that seems like something to do. Whereas two hundred dollars is like, okay, well, you know, I can sit on it and just ignore it and we'll just, we'll reevaluate it in six months or eight months. But, you know, five hundred bucks is a decent amount, that's my mind, but that's.
Well, you'd have to change the failure to register because that would end up being lower.
Yeah.
Where's that?
The last one on the fee schedule.
I don't see that.
I don't, we don't have that.
No, it's not.
Oh!
It's not on.
No.
Oh, so failure to register is two hundred and fifty plus an additional fifty dollars per month.
That's not even on the plot.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris and I came up with that, I'm sorry. That must have been the new edit.
So, so.
So can we?
So two, two fifty. Failure to register, two hundred and fifty plus an additional fifty dollars per month that you have failed to register.
Plus fifty dollars per month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, then that pretty much, that's around that figure then. Yeah.
So if you ignore it, it's gonna cost you.
Yeah.
I agree with it.
Fee adding.
Yeah, your, your five hundred dollars just went up to seven fifty plus.
Yeah.
You can, you can be up at that fifteen hundred dollars in no time.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't realize I didn't give you that.
No, that's okay.
But could we get a copy of the mailboxes?
Yes, it's exactly the same with that one line added.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do that.
And gen, like, this is just for me, but also clarification. But like generally, the idea is that we just want people to be in good faith, showing that there's some, some, like, something going on so that hopefully we can get rid of the fees as easily as possible, just that we get something moving, at least something, some sort of assurance or understanding that something's going on.
Yeah.
Oh, it's on, uh, we do have that on this one here.
I, I don't have it.
Well, this, this was the one maybe before. And this is the one after.
Well, I thought I had sent the, the revised one, but.
Oh, you did, yeah.
I thought I emailed it, I think I, I thought I emailed it to all of you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm going by what was in my box.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's, there was an older one and that's the one.
You did say it was updated on the mail.
I, yeah, I thought I said, uh, vacant building registry update, or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, you did.
Okay, that, that makes me feel.
Yeah, I, I was, that makes me feel better.
No, I was just going by what was in my box.
Okay, so you should, you should have it, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Alright, so we do have to vote on these, um, accepting these fees then.
I make a motion that we accept the fees as laid out in the Village or Champlain Vacant Building Registry.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Alright, well, let's do a roll call on this. I know, but it, it'll be, well, it is money.
It's not money. But you're not spending money.
No, but still, I, I want it to be official.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. Uh, park development. I added that because, um, we're going to try to, uh, take the donated land on the corner of Church and Cedar and turn that into a little neighborhood park. We talked about, Juanita and Mary and I have talked about putting a couple of benches in there. Um, and possibly two trees during Arbor Day, maybe.
I, I have some hosta plants I just grabbed from Tom Cresser.
Oh, that would be nice.
He took, he took all of his out?
He dug, well, not all of it, but he dug some up. Oh, I think he did.
He did, took all the hosta, yeah.
Oh, did he?
Yeah. So does he have some plants?
I have, I have little ones, yeah.
Oh, you have a lot, okay.
Oh, I have big chunks like this at home right now, so.
Yeah, we could do that, we could do that.
I was sticking them up, I said, keep them, we could use them somewhere.
Yeah.
Put them over there too.
Yeah.
And if we do something to that park, I think we need to outline it somehow.
Yeah, we need the measurements.
So what we drove onto.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe boulders like we have at the playground that, that, you know, define the parts, yeah, separate it. Yeah, I don't know, boulders on two sides, because right now it's a wraparound driveway.
Right. Um, my thought on having two trees in there is that is a very small parcel of land. And depending on the kind of trees.
When that tree grows.
When that tree grows.
Right, maybe, I don't know, stand on it and see.
Well, I go by it twice a day.
Yeah, but when you're, when you're in the middle of it, it seems, and you take out one of the driveways, because I'm sure that's encroaching on our land. Uh, I mean, we could just do one.
I, yeah, I mean, maple tree does get pretty big.
Yeah.
I mean, the one from my house, it's pretty big.
Yeah, I, I think of the red maple that we have on our side lawn, it's.
Well, crimson maple would be a nice maple tree.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we have, the crimson, Crimson King.
So do you think one, one crimson?
Yeah, because they, they get good size.
Yeah, ours is.
And they're, and they're nice, and they keep their leaves late.
No, that, that would shade that spot.
Yes, they keep their leaves very late.
Unfortunately.
Yes, unfortunately.
And I'd like two bench, benches though, I think.
I can envision like the trees kind of set back a little bit and then a bench on either side. And then some of the, is it hosta?
Hosta.
Hostas would be nice.
Okay.
I would always put one of the village, um.
Pot.
Pot with flowers.
Yeah, some color would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
I just think that two trees would, especially if we did maples.
Right.
Yeah, I think I was thinking of smaller trees, but that's fine. I love maples, yeah.
They're pretty durable.
Yeah, they are. They withstand a lot.
Okay. Juanita, do we have to, I don't really have the, the numbers on the benches. Do we have to prove that?
Can you have it up to, come on?
Yeah, oh, I'd say, is it up to about six, I don't remember. Or five hundred each? It's that tree top.
Was that the ones that you had in there?
I, I, yeah, I had printed off one example.
Right.
Were they about five fifty each?
It was five something, I think.
Those were very pretty.
Yeah.
I happened to see them while I was in this morning.
I wanted to do the shorter ones, like the four feet, not the super long ones. Um, well. I don't know, up to fifteen hundred.
I suppose it's in that.
It won't be that much.
And then the cost of the tree.
What's, what was the material, what type of bench was it?
It's the, um, the composite.
Composite. No maintenance.
Yeah.
Color is it?
We usually do green.
I'm just thinking of.
Just because green and burgundy are, are colors. Or twelve hundred, up to twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred would be.
I just don't wanna, I just, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go over and then, yeah, because the shipping and the.
And the cost of the tree?
Oh, yeah, we can put the, could put the tree in there.
I would put it all in on one.
Okay. Well, the tree's a couple hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have a clue what it, what the tree costs.
And you probably wanna go about fifteen hundred total.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
My only question about that is, are they gonna be able to plant a tree with all that debris there?
Well, Mike and I talked about it. It's no different than planting a tree at the playground.
Okay.
It's the same kind of debris.
Because I know there's, everything's, there's fill from the house that was there.
Yeah, it's all buried, but the entire playground is buried building. And Pawcat Park is completely buried buildings.
I, I didn't know what the playground was.
Oh, foundation, yeah, the foundation, the old store, it's all in there.
Yeah, all of our vacant land is buried buildings.
I'm sure we're not the only community like that.
Probably not, no.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, well, I think we can do it, but.
There, there is a low spot though in that corner.
Yeah.
Needs a fill.
Mike said he has some fill that he could bring in.
Okay, so you need a motion?
Yes, I need a motion, yeah.
Could I, can I, before we go any further?
Yeah.
I just wanna say something about the Crimson King. I, I am, I, do you have one on your property?
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with lack of grass around the tree?
Yeah.
That is the only thing. Maple trees are known for sucking the nutrients out of your lawn. So like around our maple tree, and I, I love the way the tree looks. But we are like every other year planting grass. And it'll last a year or two and then it's gone again because the maple trees literally suck the nutrients.
Is that what happens?
Yeah.
Because I can never plant grass?
We only know this because our son has the same problem and he did the research on it and told us about it, but.
Is there anything else that you can plant under it that, I mean, hostas will grow in the shade?
Well, hostas around it, yeah.
Because that's.
That's good, that's a, that's a really good idea.
Hostas like dampness though, so I don't know if it, if that tree pulls up the moisture, then.
Oh, our, our grass is always, our, our, the dirt is always very moist, so.
My front lawn has hostas and my front lawn is clay.
So that might, I just wanted to, I mean, I love the idea of the Crimson King, but.
So.
My neighbor, hers, hers are all hostas under the trees there.
Mm-hmm.
And they grow really well.
What about the cedar?
Oh, they're so, they, they, they get so out of control.
A locust is a good municipal tree. A lot of cities have locust trees. Gets that rough, really rough bark.
I don't know, I like, I like the maple, but I, I like the idea of planting the hosta around it because
Yeah.
it would, it would hide the lack of grass that will eventually happen.
Let's try it, let's try it, you know, we'll see how it goes. If it doesn't work well, we'll try something else.
So we're gonna try seeding ours again this year, but.
Throw some hostas in there.
Yeah, we should because it's.
We can get plenty. Those grow really well in there.
Yeah, I have them out of my front walkway.
Share them really well.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go with the Crimson Maple and hostas underneath and two benches and up to fifteen hundred.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, any other discussion, recommendations, thoughts? We're good? Okay. Roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. Um, I do have one piece additional. I just wanted briefly to talk, and I did in my report too, about Restore New York. Um, that's the, um, grant program that we're hoping we will get to, um, fix the old elementary school. Um, the first step is the application. The owner of the building is going to pay for the engineer to write the application. But we, the village, has to sign the agreement with AES. So I just need your okay to sign that agreement, to send it in tomorrow so that AES and Mr. Valaket can start working together to get this application in. So could someone offer that motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions about that?
There's no cost to the village.
That was not gonna be my question.
No, it's, it's up to three thousand dollars, um, but it's born, it's, it's borne by the owner. And he knows that, and he actually already met with the engineers at AES and the grant writers. And, uh, he's agreed to do that. What's that?
I said all the things suggested. At the coffee.
Oh, I know, so crazy, I know, I know. Um, you know, I, it's a long shot, but if you don't try, you won't get anymore, so it's worth trying.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion correct?
We do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.